Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. Hold on a second. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to be addressed to the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participate in a VA Zoom will be called upon at an appropriate time for each person to be allowed three minutes of speaking. So go ahead and call this meeting to order March 14, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. The invocation will be given by Pastor Jeff from Sandals Church and the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Councilmember Allen. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Before I pray, First Timothy 2:1 to 3 says, "The first thing I want you to do is pray. Pray in every way." Pray in every way and for everyone you know. Pray especially for the rulers and their governments to rule well so we can be quietly about our business of living simply in humble contemplation. This is the way of our Savior Lord wants us to live. Let us pray, everyone. Father, thank you so much for everything. Dear God, you say in your word it is right to pray. So, Lord, thank you so much for this opportunity for us to pray to you. Lord, thank you so much that we even see from your Son that he prayed, Lord, and even as Timothy, Paul tells us and reminds us as he writes to Timothy to pray. So, Father, we pray, dear God, for our government, our governing officials and the leaders, dear God, of this community. Lord, would you help them to lead and guide well and govern well, dear God? We pray for this meeting and all that is conducted here this evening, dear God, the items and the issues at hand. Father, we thank you so much for the work of everyone in this room, dear God. Thank you especially, dear God, for the ones at these desks, dear God, the attorneys, the managers, the mayor, dear God, the council members. Father, thank you so much for what they do and how they serve this community. Father, we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jeff, and thank you, Councilmember Jeff Allen. So it's double Jeff today, so. All right. So can we, panelists and clerks, have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
I'm here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Hesse?
Present.
Mayor Proton Wilson is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So item A, reordering additions or removal from items from the agenda. Do we have any removals?
Yes, I'd like to remove item number six and item number eight, please.
Six and eight. Any other additional removals?
No other additions or deletions.
Okay. Special presentation is done. Consent calendar, the, all the consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon in the city council at one time without discussion at any city or any council member, staff member, or citizen may remove of the items on the consent calendar for discussion. Do I have any removals for discussions? None? So do I have a motion for items two, three, four, five?
So move.
Second.
So we have a move by Councilor Robles and second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So item D, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment or may request a manner of attendance for future meetings. So I just want to clarify, when you're up here speaking in public comment and we don't, the council doesn't interact, it's not like we're ignoring you, we just don't talk about it unless we have a question that we want answered. So usually the city manager or one of the council members will get back with you and try to answer your question, but, so don't think you're being ignored, all right? So do we have anybody for public comment?
Yes, sir, Diane Parker.
Diane Parker, can you come to the podium, please?
Do I need to press anything? Or you do it on your own. Good evening, Mayor Hesse and city council members. My name is Diane Galvez Parker. I'm a 40-year Grand Terrace resident and concerned granddaughter. Since my time is limited, I will get to the point at hand, which is the closure of Vista Blue Mountain Assisted Living and Memory Care, as well as the new business that will occupy the location. I'm aware that the closure is inevitable, no matter how morally wrong I feel it is. Through an email exchange with Mayor Hesse, I learned that he met with the owners of Alamo Health Management last week, and therefore I have some questions. Did the company indicate if they could or would extend their May 1st deadline for residents to vacate? Did they offer any solutions for any residents who may still be left on the premises April 30th? Did they share what type of business will be located there next? Is it something that will require extra permits, security, or general safety issues for our community? In addition, I ask that you are able to lead with truth and transparency in regards to the new business model coming into our town. Lastly, I want to share with you something that I have observed on a recent visit to Vista Blue Mountain. As I was checking to see my grandma, I watched an elderly female resident in a walker approach a staff member at the front desk. She asked her, as she leaned in, "Am I sleeping here tonight?" Staff member said, "Yes." And the woman asked, "What about tomorrow?" The staff member shared her by saying, "You are sleeping here tonight and tomorrow and the night after," and the night after that. And then she mentioned that someone had her paperwork. With a look of frustration, a little bit of relief, and confusion, the woman slowly turned around in her walker, mumbled something, hands up, and said, "I just don't understand. This is a lot." Grand Terrace has welcomed each Vista Blue Mountain resident to our community for years. It is time for us to help them as they are now forced to leave our small town. As elected leaders of our city, I ask that you communicate our needs and expectations to Alamo Health Management, as well as helping our Vista Blue Mountain residents in any way possible. My grandma is a resident. She'll be okay. We have already, we're already in the process and have found her new location, but I'm concerned about the rest of her friends that are there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. So like I said, you know, we're limited on what we just talked about, but I'll be transparent. We did meet with the company. We did have a newspaper, our local newspaper. The non-biased, they're going to be publishing an article. It is, it's not a halfway house, it's not a prison, it's nothing like that. I worked in the prison, I don't think I want to bring a prison in here. But yes, we are deeply concerned about the residents. They are, you know, Grand Terrace residents, they're not just clients over there. So when we last heard, there was 30 other 50 residents were already placed. I talked to Mr. Larkin here, who also has a mother-in-law there, and we talked, he's going to get the Lions Club, plus we have some church groups that are willing to physically help them move. That's, has to be logistics with the department there and stuff, and that's a big concern so they're not worried about they don't have it, because I know some don't have family members. Some are alone, and they are confused. We have veterans there, too. So residents are stepping up to physically help. If you could get boxes to them, probably to help that. I don't know, their pride, you know, that generation's very prideful, they won't want help, but it is harding, you know, that's their home, and they feel safe here, and we are going to miss them. We have no control over, you know, private cells. Everything's, you know, gag order, but it will be, you know, like I said, the newspaper's going to be on, I've been told I'm a liar, so I don't lie. There has been other things, which I'm ashamed what residents did over here to the staff, and I hope we can move forward on it. I think the biggest thing is the fear factor, scared. They're scared, and people are scared. So, but the individuals can be from medical condition, autism, Down Syndrome, traumatic brain injury, PTSD vets, it's a transition place, it's coming in. But like I said, it's going to be more in-depth with the paper. We're trying to get the new owners to come out, and after everything calms down, you understand everything's kind of crazy right now, so just FYI information. So we are doing what we can, the city's limited what we could do, you know, both on legally, because it is a private entity, and we just make sure that they are zoned. There is going to be security there, not only to protect those residents there, but you know, that's the biggest thing. And then when you are going to see them shopping, because they are going to be functioning residents, because they have to learn how to go back in the community, it's a transition place, so they go from the hospital so they could go home to their families. So you will see them, you might even see them working. We do have a couple homes in Grand Terrace, we do have residents like that, where the young men and women are out there working and stuff, and they go back home, all right? So the fear, don't be afraid, let's welcome our new residents that are coming there, let's come together like Grand Terrace does and see if those people need help moving, and that's, you know, and the staff there's been great, and there's going, like I said, there's going to be an article. So hopefully that calms something and lets highlight, but, you know, this was news to us and, and, you know, just pray for them. I have a gentleman that I go to Bible study with, and he's, he's actually excited about moving, so, I don't know. But I know it's their home, and they can't be confused. So all we can do is just give them the love that Grand Terrace can show them and come together and help them the best way we can, all right? So I hope that answers, you know, questions, and like I said, it'll be more in highlight and detail later, all right? So but let's, let's look forward on this new venture that's been put on Grand Terrace's lap and, and do the best for the new residents that are coming in, because they do need help, too. All right? Okay. So I just wanted to give you that brief statement on there, so public comments closed. And so item seven, objective design standards for multiple-family housing and mixed-use developments presented by Conrad, city manager.
Okay, well, I'm not going to go over that whole 90-minute presentation again.
I think some people want to hear it, and they're here for a second thing.
Second round. So we'll put it in a real quick nutshell. Objective housing, objective design standards are a fallout of state legislation. The state requires, through the Housing Accountability Act, through SB 35 and through SB 330, that we provide a streamlined path for multi-family housing. These standards provide that path so that we're able to provide high-quality, high-value housing inside the state guidelines. And we went through all the details, it's very extensive articulation, building height. You know, one of the things that did come up was, and we've really looked at extensively, is building height. Today, the code allows for a three-story building in the multifamily zone with no more, no more than 20 feet of separation, so from, once again, from me to you on a three-story building. This really puts that separation and steps those top stories back so that there's more distance, more separation between those buildings at the higher stories. One of the other discussion points is so that there's some landscape trees blocking any type of views between buildings, and that windows are oriented so they're not from building to building, so you're not able to look into your neighbor's place from across the, across the aisle. So we're really trying to address that, that separation piece. Mr. Larkin? I've been working on this for the better part of four years, and of course, somebody has to throw a wrench in my works with the comment about security as part of this. This is something that, you know, we've peripherally looked at, and one of the things that I'd like to do as we go forward, if this is approved, that we reopen this in six months or a year, because there will be things we have not thought about. There's things in here that came up with comment as far as the amenities, that maybe we look at, want to look at these programmed spaces and allow for more latitude for different types of amenities and different types of activities. The security component is part of the built infrastructure, I think is an important part for us to add as we go forward. So with this, this is a starting point of a work in progress, and like all of our ordinances or codes, they are malleable as the council's needs, then the council sees these needs of the community change so we can address these changes and not be stuck with something that we don't want. So with that, I do, I would like and request that council approve the ODS as it is, but we will bring back the security changes and a look at the program spaces and amenities. I think those are really good comments that came out of our discussion earlier. Any questions?
Does council have any questions? That was not answered from the last one? All right, we'll close the questions, open the public hearing to allow public testimony in favor or against the public. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Wow. Well, we'll close public hearing. Any council, any deliberations on, on the public hearing item? Councilmember Allen?
So I'll make a motion to... direct the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance and wait for the reading and introduce.
Okay. We'll hold on to that motion. Councilmember Robles, you have a comment, deliberation?
Yes, I wanted to thank the city manager for giving steam to the comments that were made in the workshop regarding some safety and amenities. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Allen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Before we do, I'm going to read the title.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please read the title.
And before I do, I do want to make one revision to the second-to-last recital on page E 7A. Currently, you'll see in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "And concluded the hearing by voting [blank] adopting a resolution on March 14, 2023." It's actually an ordinance, so I'm going to restate it to say, "Conducted the first reading and introduction of the ordinance on March 14, 2023, and conducted the second reading and adoption on March 28, 2023." So I just wanted that statement to be clear.
Okay.
And I'll send that to the city clerk. So with that revision, the title of the ordinance is as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Grand Terrace, State of California, finding zoning code amendment 22-03 is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15061b3 and amending title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by adding chapter 18.64, establishing objective designing, design standard requirements. And I just noticed that the word "design" is not spelled correctly, so that'll be corrected as well. With that, can we have a vote?
So we can vote now? Are you sure? All right, please vote.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, and thank you for the public's input, and thank you for looking into everything on there, so, and thank you, council. So our next, so number eight was polled, and so number nine, presentation regarding general law versus charter cities, so. City attorney?
All yours. Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, city council. This item was requested by Councilmember Allen a few meetings back and approved by the city council to bring this item back for discussion. It is an overview of charter cities versus general law cities. As background, first and foremost, the City of Grand Terrace is a general law city. What does that mean? General law cities derive their powers from the state law, the state government code generally. The fundamental law of these cities is founded in the government code, which specifies their powers and their structure. Charter cities, on the other hand, are formed when citizens specifically frame and adopt a charter to establish the organization and basic law of the city. This is based on the California Constitution, which provides that the charter has the force and effect of state law. The basic difference is the degree of control that the state government has over cities. Charter cities tend, in theory, tend to have more freedom to innovate and pass ordinances on matters of municipal affairs according to local need. General law cities are more confined to what the state provides in terms of municipal affairs. As you recall from our special meeting a little while ago, you know, the term statewide concern was brought up, and this is where it becomes an important issue in charters versus municipal, general law cities. Because the legislature has tended to give general law cities the same control over internal matters that the Constitution grants to charter cities, the distinction between the two has somewhat blurred, and you're going to see where that has changed. So for example, under general law, the general law city is, is bound to whatever the state law provides, whereas with the charter city, it's considered home rule, and charter cities have supreme authority over their municipal affairs. But whether an activity is a municipal affair over which charter cities have sovereignty is determined on a case-by-case basis, and the following slides will give you some examples. So form of government. Under general law, state law authorizes cities to be governed by a city council of five members, a city clerk, city treasurer, police chief, fire chief, and the subordinate officers. Electors may adopt an ordinance which provides for a different number of council members, and traditionally, it is the city manager form of government. Charter city has more options, can provide for a strong mayor, city manager forms of government as well. So some larger cities, such as Los Angeles, Long Beach, I believe, have strong mayor governments, so that's a little bit different than what general law cities are used to. Elections generally, municipal elections under general law cities are conducted in accordance with state law, the California Elections Code, whereas charter cities tend not to be bound by the Elections Code, they can establish their own rules and procedures. Compensation of city officers and employees. Under general law, the setting of city council compensation is subject to state law. We had this discussion last year. Employee compensation, for example, is subject to the Myers-Millie Brown Act. Charter cities retain authorities to set city council compensation however they see fit. Charter cities generally attain discretion to set employee compensation, and in this case, employee compensation's subject to labor negotiations must still comply with the Myers-Millie Brown Act. That is considered a item of statewide concern. Public contracts. General law cities, we are required to do public works contracts over $5,000, we have to do competitive bidding. Such contracts must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, and if the city elects to subject itself to the uniform construction cost accounting procedures, like the city did a couple of years back, we have less formal procedures that may be available for contracts less than $100,000. Charter cities, on the other hand, they're not required to comply with bidding statutes provided the city charter or city ordinance exempt the city from doing so, and the subject matter of the bid constitutes a municipal affair. So again, charter cities do have more discretion when it comes to public contracts. Activities of statewide concern that are not deemed municipal affairs, traffic and vehicle regulation, licensing of members of a trade or profession like those darned attorneys, open and public meetings law, the Brown Act, all legislative bodies throughout the state must comply with this Brown Act regardless of their, a charter city or general law city. School systems and housing, as Councilmember Henderson raised earlier tonight, housing is now becoming an issue of statewide concern, so we're starting to see legislation like SB 9, which applies to charter cities and general law cities alike, and many of the other Housing Accountability Act provisions applies equally between general law cities and charter cities. Procedures. So in terms of drafting a charter, a charter may be drafted by a charter commission, which is elected by the voters, a charter committee, which is appointed by the city council or by the city council itself. If done by a charter committee or city council, then the city council may decide, you know, once it's prepared, whether to proceed by submitting it to the voters, recognizing that any, any charter must ultimately be approved by the voters. A charter commission must complete its work on a proposed charter and must submit the charter to the voters within two years of the date of the election of the charter commissioners. The charter commission specifically, either the city council can call for an election to form a charter commission, or one can be proposed by initiative of the voters. The initiative can only be considered at the general election. Once formed, the charter has, the commission has two years to complete their work, and at the end of that two-year period, it is abolished. Any proposal by the charter commission requires a majority of the signatures of the commission to move forward. A charter committee is appointed by the city council, is a step that can be taken as part of the city council submitting a charter. This is similar to forming an ad hoc committee to advise the city council on city matters, no fixed time, and when done, the proposed charter is submitted as a recommendation to the city council, which can be modified by the council. If the council decides to move forward with it, it can submit the proposed charter to the voters. The city council itself can also draft a charter without a charter commission or committee. The council would have to effectively draft it at council meetings, I would assume. If the council submits a draft charter to the voters, this includes a recommended charter from a charter committee, the following procedures must be followed prior to submission. First, there must be at least two public hearings on the charter proposal and content of the proposed charter. The public hearing notices must be published in a variety of ways provided by state law. The second public hearing must be held at least 30 days after the first public hearing. At least one public hearing must be held outside of normal business hours to facilitate public participation, and the council cannot conduct a vote on whether to approve the submission to the voters until 21 days after the second public hearing. When submitted to the voters, a city charter proposed by the city council on its own motion that qualifies pursuant to state law must be submitted to the voters at the next established statewide general election, occurring not less than 88 days after the date of the order of election. A charter proposed by a charter commission shall be submitted to the voters at an established general election, provided there are at least 95 days before the election. So interesting that there's two different dates for effectively the same thing, but that's your state legislature for you. Meet and confer requirements. Prior to the city council submitting a charter to the voters, a determination must be made as to whether any proposed element may affect wages, hours, or other terms and conditions of employment for employees in any of the employee organizations. If so, the city will be required to meet and confer in good faith, which means that the city and recognized employer organizations have the obligation to personally meet and confer promptly upon request and continue for a reasonable period of time to try to reach agreement on matters within the scope of representation prior to proposing a charter. And lastly, if the city council acts on its own to place the proposed charter on a ballot, it is a project, and full compliance of SEQA environmental review will be required before placing it on, on the ballot. So again, this is not required if, if it is done by the initiative process. And with that, that provides just the general overview of this matter, and happy to answer any questions.
Well, Councilmember Allen, you're the one that brought this forward. What was your reasoning, what's your thinking?
One of the things I'd like to ask the city attorney is, I think there was a slide in another presentation you made from one of your other cities, and that you, where it said advantages, disadvantages? I didn't see that here, and I was just wondering if you could go over that, please?
Sure. Let me see if I... Let me see if I... So, as outlined in the staff report, some of the potential advantages of becoming a charter city include more flexibility in procedures for elections. It could allow for additional revenue measures. For example, a charter city can have a different real property transfer tax rate and broader assessment powers. Would allow the city to set penalties for code violations higher than the state law limit of $1,000. The ability to change some public works construction rules, such as bidding requirements, as I stated earlier. Ability to adopt different regulations on the qualifications and compensation of city officials and some employment rules. More flexible standards for amending and implementing the general plan, and more lenient standards for some areas of public contracting. Potential disadvantages of becoming a charter city include, depending on the complexity of the charter, formulating a charter and educating the public may require significant expenditure of time, effort, and cost. There is limited case law on the authority of a charter city, so uncertainties may arise as to whether specific matters are municipal affairs governed by the charter or statewide concern. This could result in exposure to legal challenges in gray areas where the charter and general law differ. Charter amendments require a vote of the residents, so once you establish and adopt a charter, the only time you can amend it is if you go back to the voters for an amendment. So, that also will include time and money for the city. Charters can limit council and staff compensation, which could limit the applicants interested in city positions. To be able to rely on case law from other charter cities, a city's charter must include similar language, so it can be like-for-like in terms of what those cases provide. So, that summarizes everything in the staff report.
Okay, and so, if, say, for example, we had a, formed an ad hoc committee, and one thing led to another, and we decided that we wanted to pursue the idea of becoming a charter, other than the cost of participating in a statewide election, are there any other major costs involved on the part of the city to transition over to something like that?
Not that I can think of. Obviously, it would be the cost of educating the public. Again, we can't advocate for it, but we can educate the public, so there'd be a cost of that education, and then any staff or attorney time in working on preparing the charter. And again, as I provided in the staff report, there are numerous charters cities throughout the state, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel if that was something you were interested in. Probably find that one that you liked, that you can model your proposed charter, and then just make tweaks to it to save costs.
Thanks a lot.
Any other questions for staff? All right, well, close question. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay, any deliberation, anybody? Let's speak, Councilmember Henderson.
I spent 11 years of my career working in a charter city with a strong mayor, form of government. The mayor was the chief elected official and the chief executive, which was an interesting situation. Regardless, it appears to me that the definition of municipal affairs is, depends on what side of the bed you wake up on, and what used to be, I think, fairly clear and advantageous to consider a charter city is no longer the case here in California for a number of reasons. And the use by the state of the issues of statewide concern appear, at least in my opinion, to have nibbled away at those perceived advantages of being a charter city. But if there was some information that we have that's clear and unambiguous as to the advantages of considering a charter city, I certainly would be receptive to it. But from my reading of the documentation provided by the city attorney and my own personal experience, I don't, I'm open, but I don't see the clear advantages that would worth the time, effort, and expense.
Thank you. Councilman Robles?
Yeah, when I worked on my master's, you have to remember about 1850, when the city was, when major cities in the state were being chartered, the state of California was also going through its formation process. So, you really didn't have a system in place, so people were creating their own. Then there was a point in time when charter cities could be advantageous as far as home rule, but, for example, you're still going to have regional housing targets, you're still going to be bound by all those things. Why you would want the city council to be able to set their own salary, or not do bidding with taxpayer money, or possibly, you know, do assessments, you know, with different voting thresholds? I mean, we could choose to make them higher, we can make them lower, but it would be really more advantageous if residents saw something advantageous, and they wanted to, say, do a charter city, so instead of a simple majority on assessments, it could be 75%. Yeah, but I don't see any advantage to the workload or the expense to the city to, it would just be a falling, it's not really worthwhile. If there was some appreciable difference, but there really isn't at this point, it would be a burden on staff time, and it would be a lot of discussion during city council meetings, and we have a lot of other things that we haven't even addressed.
Thank you. I want to bring back what they're saying as a question. Define strong mayor. What is that, cartel? I mean, is that veto rights, or what's a strong mayor?
Well, I have to tell you, I've never worked with one, because most cities don't have that.
Because I've been working out, I don't know, you know, I was just saying.
But I believe that the mayor is granted certain veto rights or special authority that a general law mayor would never have.
And see, that's what gets me. I mean, we're a body. You know, I know I got the title mayor, as it is, I'm running the agendas, and I am reaching out to public. I mean, they look at that, I mean, just keep saying, but me personally, I don't want to be somebody that vetoes what the body goes. I don't want to strong-arm something. I don't think that's how good government works. I think good government works when the body agrees and works together. Are we going to disagree on some stuff? Yeah, we're not going to agree on everything, but I think that's what's the voice of the people, not just one person. So, that's my big turnoff for this whole thing. Far as the fines, I mean, we're dealing with illegal trucking coming in here and all that stuff, and these, the drivers are just looking at the fines like no big deal. You know, I know we're working on that stuff. But then I look back, and I look at the pictures on the wall behind you, City Attorney, and I look at their founding fathers right there, and what they wanted. They want a general law, you know, city. They didn't want to do this charter, and I'm sure they had both options. I think, I think the will is doing good and doesn't need that extra oil. That's just my opinion, and I really don't like the thing about strong mayor. I don't think, I think, you know, we're all equal here on that. Anyway, that's my thing. Does any other council have any comments on here? Councilmember Henderson?
I just want to echo the comments made by Councilmember Robles. The city I worked for, because the charter city was the city of San Bernardino, and it was founded in 1810, and I believe incorporated somewhere around the mid-1848, 1849. California did become a state until 1850, so her point is extremely salient in terms of the charter cities when it was considered significantly more advantageous than general law. And as I indicated, the mayor was the chief elected official and the chief executive, meaning the mayor was the chief elected official and the city manager. We didn't have a city manager, we had a city administrator, and the city administrator was subservient, of course, to the mayor as chief elected. So, in some cases, the city administrator had as much authority as the mayor delegated to the city administrator. In other cases, in the years I worked there, the city administrator had no authority, nothing except the job title. So, and if you follow San Bernardino politics, I'll leave it at that.
So, this is a receive and file reporter provide direction. Do we want to provide any direction?
Let me finish up with it since I requested it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to make sure that we were, I wanted to be educated on it, because, just to see if there was any, like I said, any advantages. I think one of the things that I wouldn't want any of you to misunderstand is that it didn't appear, by the way I read it, to be an either-or. It had to be either-or, just that being a charter city gave you more flexibility to choose, but I don't like, you know, I just wanted to learn and see, so I don't want to push the issue and say, I think we should be. You know, it appears like the consensus is that you're happy having, following state law only, and just, you know, letting the state tell us what to do, so I'll, I'm fine with that, too.
I understand, Councilmember Allen, just, you know, and it's an educational agenda that I'm sure people are asking, what's the difference? I know they were asking, but, so, I don't think we ought to do any direction here, we just want to receive and file this and move forward, right?
Yeah, just a motion to receive and file.
Okay, do I have a motion for receive and file?
You do. Second.
Now, before we vote, Councilman Robles, I cut you off. Did you have anything else to say?
Well, no, I think it's an unfair assessment to say that we're just going to let the state allow us what to do. You have local power. You know, just because we're not agreeing to this doesn't mean the hell will freeze over.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so, that's received and filed in the circular file system. So, what we have here next is a request for future agenda items. We have none. Council Communication, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The topic that I have to report on is a topic that has already been discussed. I won't take too much time. Those of you who know me know that I try to walk every day, and I had about 10 unscheduled meetings with our constituents during the course of my walk about Vista Blue Mountain, and they were good conversations. Some of the information that was shared with me was difficult to believe, but it kept coming up again and again. So, I would encourage Grand Terrace citizens to work through the city manager and the mayor with respect to information that is verifiable. I understand that there's going to be a newspaper article, hopefully clarifying for everyone what's going on. Those who have loved ones there and friends, I share the concern, but as best as I understand, the right things are occurring and will continue to occur. But for those that I've spoken with during the course of my daily walks, my walk is typically 55 minutes to an hour and 10 minutes, and I had some three-hour walks as a result of the conversations I had with members of the community. So, that's a good thing in terms of Grand Terrace citizens being engaged, and so I appreciate the input and appreciate the opportunity to do my best at sharing reliable information, and hopefully, all's well that ends well.
Well, thank you, and on that comment, my wife doesn't send me to the store, she needs something right away, because she knows I won't be back right away, so. Okay, Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. This past Wednesday, I attended the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce meeting, and I just want to encourage anybody who's interested in supporting the business community and realizes the value of it in our, in our city, and the importance of it, and wants to be a part of that growing organization, come on by at Woody's, second Wednesday of every month in the morning at 8:00 a.m. I think, isn't that right, second Wednesday? Okay, thanks, Sean. Second Wednesday, 8:00 a.m., Woody's, and enjoy some coffee and discussion on the business climate in our, in our city and how we can grow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilman Robles?
I guess, on March 1st, I attended the San Bernardino County Transportation Agency Board Meeting. Again, a lot of things are ministerial, but I'll go over some highlights. We received a procurement report, a budget report for the second quarter, and a Measure I receipts report. And I think maybe Conrad, I was going to touch base with you on some of that later. And then one thing was really cute, nice, was a stamp's coming out that's going to feature the San Bernardino train station. And then on March 2nd, I attended the SCAG Housing Economic and Human Development Committee that I got appointed to by, as a SBCTA member. This February, we had an orientation, and then March, it was a joint committee meeting, and I'm catching up, but I think as the census came, and this is the state planning agency arm, and then it gives direction to local communities how to meet those goals. So, they did the census, and they have the census now, they've been doing some foundational work, and now they're ready to go and do some community events to get people educated about what those are. And they were looking for forums for that, so I invited them to the community days in Grand Terrace, so they should have a booth. And then March 9th, I attended the Metro Valley Study Session, and at that, there was the big thing there for State Route 210. There was a big bid of money for using Federal Surface Transit Act money for the, for, excuse me, for planting, for planting. And then for using Federal Surface Act Transportation Block money, they're working on, and I'm catching up to this, too, freight and express lanes, and that would be because of all the warehouse activity here, and that we're the primary road connection for the Long Beach Harbor and LA. So, and there's also a contract because they're going to be looking at toll fares for that. And there was a Measure I allocation report for what the cities are going to be getting for '23, '24. And also, I want to thank our mayor for his sensitivity, going beyond and above what your role calls for on relation to the Blue Mountain issue. And I want to bring up something because it's something that's been annoying me, and you don't want me annoyed, because it ends up in a bad way. But, you know, there was a meeting here that we were criticized for the appointment of Ken Henderson, and the comments were egregious to me, that someone that was born in 1958, which also was born in 1952, that you're an old great-grandma, and you should be ashamed for appointing Mr. Henderson. You know, all the code of behaviors that I'm having to sign for SCAG and all that, age discrimination and any references to age is completely out of bounds, you know, and I think there's a pattern here that if we don't agree with something, then we're attacked. Or if we don't, you know, or everything's like, well, if you don't care about garbage that needs to be divided, you know, something's wrong with you. You know, I take that to heart, and I did buy the bucket, and I do try very hard to do these things. And I think, you know, we need to just move forward from those comments, and let's just make an agreement not to attack each other anymore, and really, you know, it's just uncalled for. Finally, we did have a couple of people that were younger that ran for city council, one lasted less than a year because of job conflicts, another one had to leave because of job conflict. When I was younger, I wanted to run, and I was told if I run for city council, that I need to resign from my job position. So, I think we need to be sensitive that, you know, as I look around, all the cities are, tend to be older people, and the reason it's older people is because we don't have conflicts with children and with jobs. conflicts with children and with jobs, and I think people should, you know, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robles. And you're right, we are the body, we're the leaders, we're supposed to set the example, we're supposed to help bring other people up. So, you know, we'll keep comments to ourselves. I don't know if it was meant, but we'll do that. We're here as professionals, and we're here to serve the residents of the city. And on that, I attended the OmniTrans meeting, and they had a couple awards, one for driving a million miles and about five people doing that, and then one for two million. And I was thinking there, of course, my brain was drifting. I go, why don't you have 999,099 feet and you backed up and you hit something in the driveway? That would ruin their award, but anyway. OmniTrans is hiring. This is not a job, these are careers. They need drivers, they need mechanics, and Valley College has a program, apprentice program, where you can learn the skill of being a technician and pretty much almost guaranteed to have a job. So that's something to think about. These are not just jobs, these are careers, and it's a good company to work for. I want to emphasize our furry friends in Grand Terrace, dogs. Be a responsible pet owner. Make sure your dog is licensed. Make sure your dog is secure. Your dog might be friendly around you, but might not be friendly around other dogs. Just don't let them out in the front yard and just let them run wild. My friend's dog was bit, and they're out to medical expense, and my friend, she was bit. Thank God it didn't break skin. I don't know if that dog's ever been found, but that dog was in the area that concerns me because there's a bus stop there with kids. So be responsible pet owners. You know you're allowed three dogs, three cats. We went through that, I think, what, about four years ago? But, and get your dog's license. I just had to renew the license for my pet, and the staff was very great. We do it from when the time that rabies expires instead of from calendar year. We do it from when you first got the license, so the staff worked hard on that. But be a responsible owner. If your dog does get out, if it's tagged or chipped, it could go back to its family. If you care that much about them, you would do that. Coyotes are running around. I see them when I go walking in the morning, I see them. I mean, they're coming out all the time now, like mosquitoes now. They are everywhere, and they're hunting. It's breeding season, they got pups to feed. So be a responsible pet owner, please. And if you do have problems and you can't afford getting your dog a shot, or if you're in a fixed income and you can't afford to get a license, I'm sure if you come to the city, we'll work something out. So please be a responsible pet owner. And once again, I want to thank the Planning Commission and the staff for their work on our workshop. I mean, it's a lot of work to do, it's a lot of insight, and, you know, thank you for the public again for coming out and giving us some things that was oversight on us, which are, you know, sometimes you need somebody else looking in to help you. I really appreciate that. And a big thing was the Blue Mountain hike. It was a beautiful day. The staff did a great job. They leveled the ground there so there was no crevices. The friends of Blue Mountain, Dennis Kidd and Dr. Seagull, thank you for opening up that area so we can enjoy that hike. The cheerleaders, you know, they're on top cheering us on, but, you know, they got a ride up there, and I wonder why they're so, you know, cheering us on. It was just a great family event. I'm sure Conrad's going to emphasize on that event. I don't want to take away his glory, but it was a great time. And then, you know, the staff there, they commend the staff in search and rescue and assert. I mean, we had some people that kind of make it up there, but they made sure they gave a ride so they can enjoy the beauty. So that's what's nice, you know? If we could do that and maybe offer rides, because there's some people that can't make it, and we could, you know, let them just see the beauty of our city from on top of Blue Mountain. And I heard the donkeys are taking cares for donkey rides up there. But I will leave with a question for the city manager. When is that trail going to be open year round?
That particular trail will probably never be open year round. We are working on a state grant to develop a trail that will eventually tie up into that. We're also working with Dennis Kidd on purchasing through the state grant the property, the west-facing side of the slope, to develop that trail, and that's still several years away. But it is something that we're working towards. It's not a dead dream.
Yeah. Well, hopefully it'll be soon because I was told that people say Mount Rubino was hard, but this is even harder, so you went from the experience hike. So hopefully we'll get that red tape taken care of. And once again, on the Vista Blue Mountain, you know, just keep those residents and staff in your prayers. And, you know, we're here to help them the best way we can, and if you want to help physically moving or something, maybe, I know the Lions and Don's reaching out to the Boy Scouts, too. And then, like I said, we have the Living Word Church here they want to help, and my church men's group they want to help, too. So we just got to wait on... We have to go by their timeframe at Vista Blue Mountain. We don't want to step on their toes and confuse everybody. That's the last thing we want to do is because it's confusing enough for them. So with that, I'll close public comment, and everybody, you know, thank you for coming out, and God bless, too. You know, thank you. So, city manager communication.
Yeah, just really quick to build off what you said, the Blue Mountain hike was very successful. We had over 500 people that, citizens that came and did the hike, and we had wonderful support from community organizations. I really do want to thank the fire department who came out, you know, sometimes we forget that they're part of our community and tied to us, and these guys had, you know, a busy day of things to do, and they took time out of their day to come and join and work with us. And the same thing with the sheriff's group, they were up there in search and rescue. The search and rescue guys actually did the hike, packed up all their stuff, and then went up into the mountains and spent several more days doing search and rescue activities up there. That was just the beginning of a long, long weekend for those guys. So thank you very much to all of them. The other one is, I've been very fortunate. The last couple of weeks, I've been going to visit local businesses. I've been taking the mayor with me, and we have had a great response from the businesses. You know, the one gentleman said, I've been in business in 34 years, nobody's ever come by to see how I'm doing. And so we are reaching out to the local businesses in town. The goal is to hit all of them, at least on the Barton Road corridor here in the next month or so, and really hear from them, see what it is that we can do to streamline their process. So much effort gets put into attracting new business, bringing new business into town, and this is an opportunity for us to retain the business, which costs a lot less in time, effort, and energy than bringing in new businesses. So we're working with those guys, the business owners here in town, to see what we can do to make their life easier. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we go into closed session recess, a closed session conference with legal counsel anticipating litigation, significant exposure, litigation pursuit, the government code 54956.9B, number classes one. So we're going to re... We're going to go into closed session. Closed session. Thanks, honey, for the coffee. Closed session, and then I don't know if you guys want to wait for us when we come out, but thank you for coming out and taking your time out, you know, and hopefully the kids had a learning experience today. I know they're all excited about it, so thank you, everybody, and God bless. Closed session. All right, the council reconvened from closed session. Staff was given the direction for, in the closed session, for legal conference on litigation, government code 54956.9B. Is that all we need, city attorney?
Yes, just no direction or no action taken. Thank you.
All right, no action taken. So our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, March 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. Requests will be processed in accordance to the city council procedures. And thank you, everybody, for your input, and meeting closed.